Hello and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Candidates for Forest Lake City Council. I am Mary Santi, a longtime member of League of Women Voters. I do not live in Forest Lake, and I will be your moderator. All candidates who filed for this election were invited to participate. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on your ballot November 8th. You will be electing two council members at large, and let me introduce candidates who are here. From my right, your left, Leif Erikson.
Good evening.
Jeffrey Larson.
Good evening.
And Blake Roberts.
Hello.
For our format, we will start with questions, so no opening statements. For the first question, the candidates will respond in alphabetical order, and thereafter they will be random. Speaking will be random. Candidates have one minute to answer the question, and they are allowed rebuttal or follow-up time of one minute after all the candidates have answered the question. And following all the questions, they will each have a minute for closing statements, and that will go in reverse alphabetical order. Our timekeeper will show warning signs of 30 and 15 seconds, and then a stop sign, and at that time you can finish your sentence. Don't need to stop in mid-word. We received many questions in advance and on our website, and we will not use those that were unclear or hostile or of a personal nature, and we have solid consolidated questions that were on the same general topic. All questions are the property of League of Women Voters, so let us begin with our first question. And it goes first to Leif Erikson. What do you like best about Forest Lake? What do you believe is the city's greatest need?
Thank you for the question and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. What I like best about Forest Lake is the sense of community that I've enjoyed since moving here in 2010. Forest Lake has just a number of natural resources and opportunities to, you know, raise a family and enjoy a quality of life that you can't get in just any location. And so there's just some fantastic aspects of the city. And the second part of the question was again...
What you like best and what do you feel is the city's greatest need?
Greatest need. We are poised for development, and I think that's critically important. We are on the outer ring of the Twin Cities metro, but we have, you know, infrastructure like the freeway system that's just to our south. We have a business community that is, you know, homegrown. You know, we have that represented here this evening and just across the entire Twin Cities area. A lot of people have set roots in Forest Lake, and I want to see that development continue, and I think that that'd be fantastic.
Thank you. Jeffrey Larson. Do you want to be Jeff or Jeffrey?
Jeff, please, is fine. Thank you.
We'll be Jeff that then.
I have the same question.
Yes, the same question for what you like best and what you believe is the city's greatest need.
What I like best is I believe that we have still a small-town, hometown feel, but also we have, we're a big enough community that we still have a nice rural feel to it as well. I think we get a nice blend of both. We have a nice structure as far as businesses go in the community. I think we have a nice diverse population. I think our community is strong, gets along well with each other. We host a lot of events, Arts in the Park and other community functions, while at our schools and such. And the next question, the part was best, I believe.
What you like best and what you think needs work?
What I think needs a little work is the infrastructure. I think in speaking with some of our community leaders, we've had some areas of work and concern, and I think that this infrastructure needs a little more improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Blake Roberts.
Thank you for inviting me here this evening. So what I like the best about Forest Lake, it's an amazing community, just outside the Twin Cities, obviously. I think that mix of both rural and urban is, we're right on the cusp of that, and it makes it an attractive place to live and want to work and play. The lakes, the natural resources and everything are just a huge amenity, and really is what, why this town began. It was because of the railroad and of the lakes. So I think those are the two biggest, greatest things. The need, I think just more, more development. We are poised to have that opportunity. We have had the land available. Again, the location to the Twin Cities in both downtowns is something that we can, we need to work harder on. There's opportunities for smaller lots to have more density, and that only is going to bring more people to the community and help local businesses and schools.
Thank you. And you each have time for rebuttal or follow-up if you choose. Just let me know at the end when everyone has answered.
I'll just take, if I can, a couple of seconds. You know, in terms of development, I agree with Blake in that, you know, housing density is helpful, more people, but I also want to see that business development. That is so critical. I mean, we've been having budget discussions, you know, over the last several weeks, and we'll continue to this next week. We know what our expenses are. We have a good sense of that. What we don't know is our revenues. And the more business development that we have, it creates revenue without creating more expense, you know, significantly from a city service standpoint. And so that's where I want to have that mix, both business development as well as housing development, is a great mix that we need to pursue.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next question then. And Jeffrey Larson will be the first to begin. The city council is responsible for setting strategies for the city. What initiatives would you push for?
The initiatives I'd push for, again, I think would be our infrastructure is a strong point. We are currently working, I've been attending some of the council meetings in town here recently with all that's going on. This is the first council that's actually set forth in motion a 10-year plan, and I think that strong infrastructure and with fiscal spending and conservative, some conservativeness, I think would be beneficial for everything in that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next to go is Blake Roberts.
Thank you. So as far as, if I'm elected to be on the city council, one thing that I really want to work hard on and push for is creating the downtown or improving our downtown. We've got a great opportunity there, right on the waterfront, that could be similar to a White Bear Lake or a Wayzata. I think working with local developers or developers from out of town, that using different things like TIF financing and partnering with them and some parking options, I think are something that really needs to happen here in the city and will help downtown get, be where we want it to with our downtown plan that we just finished up.
Thank you. And then Leif Erikson.
So strategies for the city, I'd really want to see the city mature as a partner, you know, to our schools, to our business community, to our family community. We need to be a partner in all that's being done, whether it's developers or what the case would be. One other strategy that I'd like to push forth, it wouldn't be city-driven per se, but I'd like to see come to pass, would be a visitors bureau. If you've looked at the St. Paul Chamber East Metro Guide, I mentioned that as well. I think this is an opportunity, there's so much going on in not only Forest Lake but the surrounding communities that is positive. We mentioned Arts in the Park, we've got the fly-in, we've got all kinds of things that are happening, again, not only in Forest Lake but our surrounding community. I think it would be a great opportunity to help the general public locally as well as in the surrounding areas know that Forest Lake is here, there's a lot of great things happening, and we, you know, it's just, it's time that Forest Lake has that.
Thank you. Anything further or anyone?
Well, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next question, and we'll go first to Blake Roberts. Please describe your personal approach when it comes to the budget and financial oversight responsibility of the council.
My, my financial approach on that, my personal financial approach on that would be, you know, Forest Lake's, Forest Lake's in the position that we do need to make some changes. The, I mentioned the downtown plan, that that is going to be put into place. There's a dollar amount to that with $35 million. We don't have to do that immediately. That's a long-term plan. I think that being fiscally conservative but yet proactive to try to get some of these initiatives going is key in what I would like to see happen. We have a relatively low tax base compared to most cities our size, and so, but, you know, the increasing and with the economy right now, you need to be very concerned about that and make sure you're being responsible with your spending.
Thank you. Then next, Leif Erikson.
Yes. So my personal approach to budget and finance, this is actually what I do for a career. I've spent my entire career in personal finance, working with folks of every economic strata and helping them be wise stewards, and I would want to bring that to the city. You know, it's been talked about how we can't stop kicking, you know, we need to stop kicking the can down the road, and I would agree with that. I mean, it's kind of one of those things, like I've told my kids with education, it's pay me now or pay me later. You can either do your studying now and get scholarships, or you can screw around now and pay student loans, or, you know, lean on mom and dad to write the check. You know, kind of the same thing with personal finance. We either deal with the hard realities of where we're at and make wise choices to make, to move us in the direction we want to go, or we just keep hoping that something will change. Now, I've got clients that, you know, it's age 60, they haven't saved a dollar for their retirement. Guess what? It's going to pay me, pay me later, right? Because it's, those savings amounts get pretty significant compared to those 20-year-olds when we can start early, plan ahead. So I love the 10-year projection that's finally come out. I think it's critically important. I don't understand why we didn't have it before, but I'm grateful for this council to have gotten it in place now.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
I'd have to agree both with Blake and Leif. My personal approach is, I think, steadfast on being, focusing on our budget and continuing with building our infrastructure. However, we do have to be a little careful with our spending. We have been a little weak in maintaining that, so therefore we do have to play a little catch-up as both candidates had mentioned. I think we can do it, especially with the 10-year plan that the council had brought attention at last night's meeting that I attended, and I think there's some strong, some strong looking forward to some good, solid business here for the community with that budget in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
If I could just, yeah, add, I agree with both gentlemen. The 10-year plan that the current council has put into place and staff really is excellent, and is long overdue, and it'll help us guide us for the next 10 years. The, there are a number of different funds that they're trying to get a balance up there, so as major things happen, we can, you know, use that money instead of having to bond for, for major purchases. So that in the long, in the long run is only going to save us money.
Thank you. Anything more? Okay, we'll go to the next question. It will go first to Leif Erikson. What skills and experiences do you have that will help you as a council member carry out your duties?
Well, from an experience standpoint, throughout my career, I've naturally migrated to different leadership roles, whether it was in, when I was in a season of working in the nonprofit sector, raising up volunteers at different organizations, and so I've got that experience. Here locally lately, you know, I've served on the EDA for the last couple of years. We got involved with the more local business community through the Chamber of Commerce, asked to serve on the board and asked to serve as a chair-elect for this, this current year. And so, you know, one of the skills I feel like I have is from a listening standpoint, I don't generally come from a position of I need to have my point come across, you know, like I've got the right answer. It's more about soliciting and understanding, seeing different points of view, and then synthesizing that down and leading from a place of understanding, but, you know, with clarity and distinctiveness.
Thank you. Next to go is Blake Roberts.
Could you repeat that question one more time?
The question, what skills and experience do you have that will help you as a council member carry out your duties?
So I have had the opportunity to be involved in three small businesses, two of them which were startup, one was a long-time family business. I think, similar to owning your own business, the fiscal responsibility of that, the planning, the leadership that comes from that is something that will help me, if elected, carry out my duties as city council. I also have been on the EDA for 12-plus years, so I feel I have a pretty good knowledge of city government, how it works, the expenses, the budget, and I have also been past president of the Forest Lake Rotary Club, Forest Lake Lake Association, and been active in the chamber.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
My skills and experience that would help for council, I think my experience of being a Washington County Sheriff's Deputy for over 27 years, throughout the county, working in several different capacities, working with several different cities, city councils, and different functions of government. Also, my past involvement with the Townhome Association that I used to live, live in, I was an acting member and eventually the vice president of the area for approximately four and a half years. I think my, my strong points that I could bring to the city council would be my compassion for people, my strong problem-solving skills and strategic thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. You've all answered. Anything further to add? Anyone? Okay, we'll go to the next question. It will go first to Jeff Larson. Do you agree or disagree with how the city decided to use federal COVID relief funds? And explain your reasons.
From my understanding, the city obtained their money, and there was some, a little bit of discrepancy in what they were going to be using. So I think they made the right decision to return the money back to the state rather than get caught up in some unfortunate issues or circumstances. I think it probably could have been better planned out and used in a more of efficient manner, and I think there's a lot of different things we probably could have used that money for. It's a shame that it came to a situation like that, but I believe they did the right decision in returning the money back to the government.
Thank you. Blake Roberts.
Thank you. So as a member of the EDA, we were in charge of a lot of those funds to give back to businesses, and I think the city did an amazing job doing that very quickly when it was needed, especially a lot of these businesses, restaurants and that, where that were really in tough, tough shape. The city turned that around, staff did an amazing job with that. And then also the internal needs of the city, for the most part, I think they did a great job. However, the Castlewood Golf Course situation was really disappointing. I was probably one of the most vocal people about that, and it just, it wasn't right. You know, this, we were supposed, this was money was supposed to given to us from the federal government to help us get through a pandemic, not increase or enlarge city facilities, especially a golf course. So, you know, all in all, they did a good job with that was, really was a black eye for, for the community and for the staff and the current city council.
Thank you. Leif Erikson.
Yeah, I'd largely echo Blake's comments. I did have this opportunity to see how, you know, much of the funds were being utilized, you know, internally and helping support our business community, and, you know, from that standpoint, the city did a great job. But I too would disagree with, you know, how things played out, and the only thing that people remember, frankly, you know, what we made the news about was, you know, getting caught up in the Castlewood Golf Course. But I think it actually, you know, actually goes back further than that. It speaks to the planning in the past around our park system. And frankly, that is a city-owned park, you know, golf course. And if we had been budgeting for that and for, you know, the future development of that, the goal, whole goal there is, my understanding, is to get, so that it's no longer being supplemented by the city, that it's a functioning entity on its own, so it's not subsidized by the city. From that standpoint, I love the idea, but we went about it in the entirely wrong way. Thank you.
Anyone further to add? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and Leif Erikson will begin that one, and the question is, what do you believe will be the impact on property taxes, given the increase in residential property values?
Well, as I think we've seen, you know, the budget numbers that are coming out in the levy, it looks like the tax rate's actually going down. I think the projected tax rate's about 35, which is significantly lower than it was even seven years ago, you know, over 40. And so, the thing that we can control is controlling expenses and being mindful of how we plan. You know, we need to serve the community, we need to be ready for growth, we need to, you know, replace now, no trucks when they need to be replaced. Those things just have to happen. I don't think we're going to see another 26% property increase. I mean, we've all, for those that were selling, we're awfully very happy to have the property increases go up. You know, when it comes time to paying taxes, it's a little different story, which I, you know, I'm part of that because I didn't sell. But I think that the city is doing a great job of planning out that, the expenditures that they can control, they can't control what the market does. We've seen property values drop, you know, even 10, 15 years or 12 years ago. I don't perceive that to be the case. So, you know, ideally, we're going to continue to see property values increasing and, you know, steady but steward, you know, good stewardship from the city on their spending side.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
Could you repeat the question? I caught the tail.
The question is, what do you believe will be the impact on property taxes, given the increase in residential property values?
Well, I'd like to kind of echo what Leif was saying. I believe that the taxes, we did suffer a pretty substantial tax increase. And again, kind of echoing back to the city's 10-year plan that they've put in effect, I think we need to do more with our infrastructure and prepare more for continued residential and business increase in the development area. There's only so much I think we can do with our budget, and I think we need to be just as fiscal responsible as we can with that, and bring the most, most benefit to the table as possible. Thank you.
Blake Roberts.
So, thanks. So that, it's a double-edged sword, right? You know, it, values go up, that's, that's a positive. The negative is the implications on how that is affected on your individual tax statement. That is, you know, the, the valuation's in itself, it's an imperfect science. I wish it could be a better system there, potentially. I know cities this size don't typically bring in their own tax evaluation. They usually use the county. That, as Forest Lake grows, maybe that's something that we, we could look at to have a little bit more control as to what those rates are and how fast they accelerate. This was the unfortunate, real unfortunate part about this is that, you know, by, by some accounts, that, that value now is starting to go the other way, just as fast as it increased. So you have this up and down. If there was more of a consistent, it would be much easier for people to budget out of their own homes as far as how their taxes are, go up. The, the, yeah, so thanks.
Well, we have an opportunity for another addition if any of you would like to say more.
Yeah, I'll just finish if that's okay where I was going there. So it's, it's, the rate that the city is taxing is, again, relatively low, and a lot of that has to do, any increase, I think it's going to be 6.5% or that's where they're thinking the levy's going to be. A lot of that is out of the city's control. It's, it's a lot of it, labor negotiations and contracts, and so that typically is about a 3% increase. So really, it's not giving the city a whole lot to work with if they're trying to keep things below that 6%, so the current council is working hard and hopefully can get that down. The levy itself, I know they have to set that levy here next week, but by December, with some additional funding coming in, the hope is that it would be lower than what they're projecting at this point.
Thank you. Anything further over here? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and the first to speak will be Blake Roberts. The downtown plan for Forest Lake was approved by the council in July. What do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of this plan, and what would you prioritize?
So I had the opportunity to be a part of that with the EDA. That was an EDA-initiated project, and so it's exciting. There's a lot of opportunity for downtown Forest Lake, again, with the waterfront. I think the strengths there are just having the opportunity to see something that we have down as a, as a roadmap, really. None of this is set in stone. It can be, it can change, but as the development comes to us, at least we have a roadmap down to decide whether or not that's the route we want to go. I think the, the weakness is the boat launch. That was a contention for a lot of people. Parking downtown is, is an issue for, for some, and a lot of that parking issue becomes from boat traffic and trailers. So one idea was to take that out long-term. I would disagree with that. I think that the boat launch brings additional traffic and people into downtown, and so trying to find some parking off-site relatively close to the launch is how I'd like to see things go with that plan.
Thank you. Next go is Leif Erikson.
Thank you. Yeah, I too had the opportunity to be a part of that downtown plan, and one of the strengths that I feel of it has is just the community input. I mean, our consultant did a nice job of getting engagement from the broader community through the Arts in the Park, conversations with the business community. So I feel like there was a number of voices, anybody that wanted to have a voice in, in the development of it certainly had that opportunity too. And I was at one community meeting where there was plenty of input, which was good to see. Weaknesses, you know, our downtown is frankly handcuffed by Highway 61, by MinDOT. I mean, if we want to even do something as simple as putting down, you know, planters downtown for the beautification committee to add a little bit of, you know, brightness, we've got to get them to sign off on it. That has to change. If we want to have control of our downtown and control the destiny, we've got to get that back for MinDOT. I think in the meantime, we can prioritize some low-hanging fruit to just make it more accessible, directional signs and some other things that were in the plan that, I mean, frankly, it's, they're low-hanging fruit, but I think they have an impact and show people that it's not going to be just another book on the shelf.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
Again, I'd have to agree with both candidates. I think the city did a good job with having, like, the ambassadors applied to that, getting the input of the community, also having a consulting firm do some work on it and hit some of the high spots with what we need and what would, could be good possible development in that area. Again, some of the weaknesses, again, are parking, and again, they were talking about maybe a parking ramp, possibly. Again, the contention there is, is you have Highway 61, which is a very busy highway. You're going to have a lot of boat traffic in that area, and also the, just the general pedestrian traffic too. But I think they do have a, a good 30-year plan. It's going to take some time to build and put it together, and there's going to be changes, as both candidates had said, but I think we have a good, strong future ahead of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further to add? Okay, we'll go to the next question, and Jeffrey Larson will be the one to begin. What do you envision the need is for affordable housing over the next five to 10 years?
What do I envision the need for, for affordable housing over five to 10 years? I think, again, just the, the city's plan as far as for residential... I think, again, just the, the city's plan as far as for residential build. What we can do to draw our, draw some more residential building, bring some other community members to the city, possibly some tax base, and a little bit of small business growth also for that. I guess I'm not quite sure as far as some of that area of gray for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Blake Roberts.
So, affordable housing can mean many things. Most people think when it comes to affordable housing, apartments or, or lower income, but affordable housing is on, really on all levels. We have a nice mix of apartments, multifamily housing that's come up to Forest Lake in the last couple of years. I think that's great. But really where Forest Lake can focus on, I think affordable housing would be on smaller lot sizes. I mentioned that earlier. I think there's an opportunity there. If the maximum size or the minimum size lot right now in the city of Forest Lake is fifteen thousand square feet, most cities comparable size are closer to that, eight thousand square feet. So really, affordable housing could mean an apartment or single-family home and where if someone isn't able to afford a fifteen thousand square foot lot, maybe it's an eight thousand square foot lot, and makes it a little more affordable for that person to, to move to Forest Lake and be a part of the community.
Thank you. Leif Erickson.
Yeah, I mean, housing in, affordable housing in Forest Lake has long been an issue. It is a, it is a big price point, just on averages, if you just look at the averages and the studies. I would agree with Blake, you know, creating an environment where the housing developers have an opportunity to actually put up homes that are affordable, that have, you know, regardless of life stage, whether it's that starter or that next home. I mean, you know, we used to joke about maybe putting up these McMansions. Well, when you're building on scale and you have certain requirements, you, you know, as a developer, your hands are kind of handcuffed a little bit, or, you know, you're, you're limited, so that you can, you know, pay your staff and do what you have to do. So, creating situations where those developers can create more affordable homes and still make a reasonable profit is going to be one of those solutions. And, you know, we've had plenty of apartment buildings coming in, which, you know, can be a stepping stone to that, you know, bringing those folks into town, and then if we can create those next steps for them from an affordable housing standpoint with smaller lot sizes, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Anyone? Okay. The next question will go first to Blake Roberts. What do you envision the need, oh, you said that when I did, so the next is, what efforts should the city consider to make Forest Lake safe for all citizens?
So, Forest Lake, we're fortunate, we have an amazing police department here. We have longtime officers, command staff, that have done just an excellent job. A number of, a couple of years ago, when, when there was conversation where they almost disbanded the police department, the public really rallied behind like no other time in the city that I've, I recall. And that just shows you how, the support that the police department has. They, they have different safety camp, they're, they're out there, they're, they're seen, and I think the more they're out and about, the less, you know, it's going to deter crime. So, we're fortunate there. The city has funded them very well, and they do, they do an amazing job.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
I think we need to trust and support the current safety system, the public safety, the police. I think we need to ensure that they both are supported with enough staff, equipment and training, and I believe they're the, that's the foundational needs of our community, and it's essential to get the job done. I believe the police department's doing a phenomenal job with, again, as Blake mentioned, safety camps, being visible to the community at Arts in the Park, hosting other events, being visible in our schools as a school resource officer. We have the speed trailer out. They're looking at hiring additional help. They're down three officers currently at this time. However, they're looking at maybe community service officers to help loosen the load and handle some of the non-priority or safety issues for the, the community.
Thank you. Leif Erickson.
Yeah, thank you. I think our Forest Lake Police Department has done a phenomenal job of creating, you know, such a culture of trust between the body at large or the community at large and the, and the police force, whether that's at the school or the public, you know, in general. You know, you see them out there at Arts in the Park on the Fourth of July. I mean, they always have a smile on their face. They're easy to approach, they're easy to have conversations with. It's just, you know, not that way in every community, and this community actually appreciates them, as we saw a few years ago, and so I'm grateful for that. You know, the, the other thing is having that long-term police force, having staff that doesn't have a lot of turnover. They know where those trouble spots are. They, you know, are proactive, they're able to be proactive, and, and that's essential. And so I'm, I'm really grateful for our police, police force.
Thank you. And anything further to add? Anyone? Okay. We'll go to the next question, and Leif Erickson will begin. How would you go about seeking input from the community? And how would you use that input in setting policies and direction for the city?
How would I go about seeking input from the community? Boy, there's just so many different ways of communication. I mean, my phone number's out there. If I receive calls, even, you know, this short amount of candidacy from citizens, always welcome to have a cup of coffee. You know, if there's a reason or a need arises to have, you know, a more public event, I'd be happy to do that. I've been told I'm a good question-asker and a good listener, so Lord willing, that would continue on. And that's, you know, I, I do seek other, you know, the community's input. I want to understand what their concerns are, so I can represent them well. Again, I've got my value system. I, you know, I'm passionate about some things, but I want to make sure that the strategy that I might be, be a part of if, if elected to the council is representative of the community at large, is not, you know, I'm not living in a silo, but is certainly representative of the broader community to serve them well.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
I think to, to seeking the input from the community and how I'd use it would be through social media, Facebook. I think that when we registered to be candidates for the council, we put our email addresses on there, our phone numbers, our addresses. I think we're, we put ourselves out there to be visible to the community, and we're looking for feedback, and we're available for questioning about some of the topics. I think that I hold a strong compassion for, for people. Again, I'm a strong problem solver, and I think we have good, good strategic thinking, and I think the community would set trust in us, and I'd like to keep that, and hopefully they would bring that forward to us to build the community stronger.
Thank you. Blake Roberts.
Thank you. Seeking input is, is, is huge. There's different things that I've been involved in here with, with the EDA, and where we have tried to do that and, and get as much input as possible, but with people, their day-to-day lives, they, they're busy. And so unfortunately, a lot of times, people don't learn about things until it's already been passed or something's been in place, and then there's, then there's the issue. So, I, I've, I've told another people, if I'm elected, I will be reaching out to them to get their perspective on, on different issues, because it's always good to, to have someone else's thoughts on something. And so, the more that we can get, I think it makes it all better leaders, whoever gets elected, and, and it just needs to be first and foremost. Social media is a great opportunity. You hear about all the negatives about social media, but there are some positives, and I think that and just getting the message out to the taxpayers about different things happening is, is something that we can really even do better. The city does a decent job, but it can be even done better.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Next question will go first to Blake Roberts. Have you noticed change in the demographics of Forest Lake? If so, how has that impacted the city?
There, you know, we still have a, a small minority population, but that's, that's growing, and that's, that's great. It's, having that diversity is, is huge. I think the schools do a nice job of, of making that happen and making it more inclusive for everyone, and so, you know, as, as time comes and keeps on going, it's, it's going to be a big thing that for Forest Lake, and it's going to be a positive. The more diverse, the better, in my opinion, and I hope to, the city to welcome that.
Thank you. Leif Erickson.
Yeah, I mean, we are still, you know, very much a, you know, European community, largely speaking, but there certainly is, you know, demographically, you know, more diversity coming and in, you know, it's a positive thing. It's, you know, as far as how it'll impact Forest Lake, I mean, I absolutely, I'll, I'll positive, I mean, we get more perspectives. It's not living in a silo of, of one perspective. I think that that's incredibly valuable, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
I'm, I believe we are doing a good job with our demographics and our diversity, and also in our community. I guess from some of the information that was given and shown is, we stand between St. Paul, Forest Lake, and Columbus has probably one of the higher per-population among community members in the city, and I think that stands for something, that the city is open to cultural diversity, not only in the community, at our schools, and at our functions. And I think we all welcome that to our community, and are grateful for having that, to build a strong community.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Okay. The next question goes first to Leif Erickson. What steps could the city make to respond to climate change?
I think one of the things that we've seen in the recent budgeting is that we, we recognize that we need to take care of our waterways, you know, just from the environment in general. And so, you know, we've got to plan around the surface water management. Forest Lake has done a phenomenal job of the enhanced roadway cleaning to keep more pollutants out of our systems, out of our road, our waterways. And so every one of those incremental steps and doing it with partnership, we don't have to do it alone. We, you know, we got a, a new city sweeper, you know, through a grant, I think it was with the watershed. And just having that partnership so that we can combat this, it's not something that the city can take on its own, as we continue to see development, whether it's, you know, housing or business, to encourage, take those steps, to do it with a mindfulness towards the environment, towards, you know, climate change. Every one of those incremental steps that we take has a positive impact, and so I'm grateful that we've already taken some steps, we can continue to and need to.
Thank you. Question goes next to Blake Roberts.
So, with having so many natural resources, the lakes and that, that is partnering up with the watershed district, the lake association, as Leif mentioned, the grant with the street sweeping and keeping runoff and pollutants from going into the lake is, is a huge piece of that. Other things that, that the city itself, with all the equipment, trucks, tractors, all that, using the best technology, the cleanest technology in, in fuel and, and different technologies that's going to come about, that we can use is going to only help the long-term, you know, that's, that's the goal for a lot of people. Electric's a little bit, some people are believing that, some don't, but whatever the technology is that the city has that it still is cost-effective, I, I think would be important to implement for city vehicles.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
I think both were, our, our candidates have covered it pretty heavy here. I would agree with both of them on that. Again, I think the lake association and the watershed district have both have dug in deep and hard and looked at any possible things for resources to help control our climate change. One of the things that was mentioned to me by a lake association president was is they're going to try something with phosphorus. There's a, a strong part of phosphorus coming from the lake, and they're going to try a compound in the area by where Aqua Building is currently to see how that has an effect to try to control the phosphorus from seeping up to the surface. But I think we do need to continue with other possible means for power sources and such. But I think we're heading in the right direction with all our community's help with the lake association and the watershed district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to add?
If I could just add one. I, I was involved with the, the planning and design of this building and when, the new city center, and at the time, whatever, the technology that was available, the city did a good job of implementing that to keep it as green as possible, and going forward, any of that, new facilities that the, that the city is, that they're going to be putting up, that, that needs to be a, a big piece of it.
Okay. Anything else further? We'll go to the, what will be the last question, and it will go first to Jeff Larson. What role can the city play in the preservation of natural spaces and habitat and for waterfall and other wildlife in the city? And how will the increase in residential and business development affect that?
I believe that anytime there's any development of any sort in the community, I believe that the, there is a extended survey as what the impact of that type of structure, if they're going to be doing building, how that would impact our natural resources, our waterfall, our water runoff. I guess the city's role in that, I guess, is just to maybe just police that a little better, and then as our developments are larger or smaller, I think maybe look at water runoff areas for waterfall and areas of any water runoff or contaminant problems or something possibly into any of our lakes or streams.
Thank you. Question goes next to Blake Roberts.
The watershed, partnering with the watershed district, the watershed district does an amazing job of, of making sure that, that those natural resources are protected. To, some may say to an extent that is hurting development, so that, that thought, that balance there, that, that you are protecting those natural resources, but yet still allowing for development, that makes, that makes sense. I think something that Forest Lake hasn't put into place, but other communities have is, in development, have more dense, if you have a larger spread of land, a hundred acres or so, put more of a dense housing on one area of that land and keep as much open land on the other, on the other part of it to keep that open feel, you know, have waterfall, different, different animals, to have that not be chased out of the, out of their, their land. So, I think doing that is something that the city needs to look at. We really don't have any developments like that. There are some larger tracts that, that have been developed with some park dedication funds or fees, or, or actually just donating the land, and so that, that's been a way to help that as well.
Thank you. Leif Erickson.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, one of the things that I think all three of us would agree is that we, we enjoy living in Forest Lake because of the ambiance, right? The, the natural resources and the habitat that we, we get to enjoy as we, you know, drive about the community. I'm sure it's true, most people that are in Forest Lake, why they've moved out here or continue to raise their families here. And so the city should play a role in that in partnership with organizations like the, the DNR and the watershed, so that as we, you know, we've all talked about development, whether it be residential or business, which is essential and will be coming, we need to do it in a mindful, balanced way that does protect that natural habitat, and, you know, done in such a way that it's going to continue to maintain the, the ambiance that we've enjoyed, the community that we want to raise our families in.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to the closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute to summarize your qualifications and positions on the issues, and it will be reverse alphabetical order, so we'll go first with Blake Roberts.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me this evening and having this opportunity to share some of my thoughts. I, I think regardless of who you vote for, we have three great candidates here and, and another gentleman that wasn't able to make it. I think, so my, my reason I think that I would be a, a good candidate would be that just my experience with the city, being a third-generation family member here in Forest Lake and business owner, and being involved in the, the community. Lake and business owner, and being involved in the, the community through the Rotary, Lions Club, Lake Association, and then being a part of the EDA. That's been a huge learning opportunity for me, and I think that will suit me well going forward if, if elected.
Thank you. Jeff Larson.
Thank you. I think a strong point, and for me, I, one, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight for the League, also to my candidate friends here and that, good luck to all you on the, for council position. I think a strong service for others is my strong point. I think you have to be in the community to build the community. I need to, service for me, I'm, I'm compassionate with, for, with people, strong problem-solving skills and strategic thinking. I think my employment with the Sheriff's Department over 34 years of total law enforcement experience, I think I bring a strong field and background to our community, especially in supporting our law enforcement here in town, and I think I would str, be a strong voice for the council for now and in the future. And please reach out and vote November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Leif Erikson.
Well, thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to be here. I mean, Forest Lake is, we have four great candidates to choose from this election cycle, which is fantastic. I would be honored to serve on the council. You know, I'm invested in this community as a business owner. My wife's a graduated resident, you know, from here. We raised our family here, and, and I'm going to continue to, to be a part of this community. And so if I can serve in some capacity strategically to help continue to move the city forward, I think it's in a great trajectory. I think there's a fantastic opportunity in front of us, you know, from development, whether that's, you know, downtown or business or housing, and so I would just be honored to be a part of that conversation at this council level. And, you know, it's been, it's been a joy to be a part of the EDA, to be involved in some of those things that are happening so far, and so I look forward to the opportunity to continue serving the community.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum for candidates for Forest Lake City Council. Thank you to the candidates for putting yourselves forward to serve. You can view the recording of this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. You can also look for it on your local cable channel at the times of their choosing. Our website, L W V hyphen W B L A dot org, has listings of all of our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for those forums. And so in parting, remember to vote before November 8th, on or before. Early voting starts September 23rd. Thank you.